Good evening, Dayton. Welcome to the Town of Dayton Planning Board regular meeting on this Wednesday, October 16th at 7:00 p.m. If you can please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. By way of reminder, this is a public meeting being video and audio recorded for cable broadcast. Want to confirm that next meeting will be held here Wednesday, November 6th, 2024 at 7:00 p.m. And first order of business is a public hearing for David Butler, trustee of the Butler Family Irrevocable Trust at 833 Williams Street, MAP 8, lot 2021, for a special permit application. We received an email requesting continuation from Reynolds, Genevieve, or is it Genevieve Reynolds?
Genevieve, yeah.
Genevieve Reynolds on October 15th, 2:24 p.m. yesterday afternoon, and requested to continue the planning board hearing. Are we proposing it to be on the 6th?
Yes.
Alright, so we'll continue that till the 6th. Do we have to take a vote for that, or is that just per request? That's what we're doing, right?
We need it though.
Okay. Could somebody make a motion to continue the public hearing as previously stated to the November 6th planning board meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Yeah, sorry Dan. I'll have to review the tape later on. It'll be a photo finish. Motion made and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Awesome, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for DG Dayton LLC and ISM Solar III LLC, 2734 Elm Street, MAP 23, Lot 10, special permit modification. And prior to starting the legal notice to the planning board on October 16th, 2024 at 7:00 p.m. Old Town Hall, 1111 Somerset Avenue, Dayton, Mass. 02715. Thank you. Notice is hereby given. The Dayton Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on a special permit site plan modification application by DG Dayton LLC and ISM Solar III LLC for approval of the modification of the special permit in order to remove a total of 6.41 acres for the creation of two Form A buildable lots located at 2734 Elm Street, being shown as assessors' map 23, Lot 10 pursuant to sections 4,600, 5,300, and 5,400 of the Town of Dayton zoning bylaws. Obviously, the application and plan may be viewed in the planning board office during normal business hours or requested by email at k Easterday@Dayton-mass.gov. Any person wishing to be heard on the above applications should appear at the time and place designated for the public hearing. From the Dayton Planning Board, signed, Jeff Cabala, Chairman. So at this time, is there somebody here who's going to present on this? We didn't vote to open this, did we?
We need a vote to open the public hearing.
Oh, here it is. Somebody make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Mr. Maden, seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Further ado, sir?
My name is Attorney Robert Fredericks. My office is in Dayton, resident.
Okay.
With me is Ron Mederos. Mr. Mederos is DG Dayton LLC. Just background, Mr. Mederos has a longstanding relationship with the Town of Dayton. He had actually, he's the person who donated the 56 acres for Sweet Knoll Farm, amongst some other things he's had in town.
He donated that?
He did. He did. It was all riverfront. It was really nice. So just to set the situation, ISM Solar Dayton III is the holder of the special permit. That is Greg Lucine's concern. I actually represented them in front of this board back when they got the special permit to operate that. What it is now is ISM Solar has contracted with DG Dayton LLC for the purchase of the two potential Form A lots in the front. The two Form A lots, as they're shown on the plan, have nothing to do with the solar array. They're not used to access, maintain, repair, or otherwise to have anything to do with the solar array. So it's just superfluous acreage, and it's not necessary at this point for any purpose. So at this point in time, they've come together, made a deal, and basically the idea would be conformed to, you know, Form A lots. They've got the right dimensions, frontage, so forth and so on, and the ultimate idea would be to build two residential homes.
And that's showing on the plot plan here, that's the Lot 1 and Lot 2?
Yes.
Along Elm Street, is what your proposal?
Yes.
And then the remaining would be the... Lot 3 would be the remaining?
Yes.
Showing the access easement right there? Are you familiar with the questions that were asked by the Conservation Commission?
I am, yeah. So we did the delineation as part of the permit and construction process. Obviously, they, most, well, there's a stream that runs behind the two subject lots, but most of the wetlands are actually on the solar arrays lot that would remain. But that notwithstanding, the applicant does understand he'd have to go in front of Conservation if he did any sort of construction. He'd have to redelineate and then, you know, potentially do an NOI depending on where he was locating any building envelope.
Okay.
But that's, I mean, that doesn't really have any effect to this process as far as, you know, whether or not the acreage should be broken up.
Right, yeah, I understand. So that was one where the wetlands delineated, plagued, that's also something that's going to happen. Wetlands should be, it's all to depict a 100-foot regulated buffer zone off of them, which is, again, part of the flagging regulations. Okay, that's part of the normal process.
That would all be done if and when they elected to try to go through the construction process, obviously. At that point, they'd have to, you know, delineate and also, you know, show the building inspector at the time of application that that's all been done.
Okay. Mrs. Easterday, did we ever hear back from police chief or fire chief on this?
Excuse me, no, did not.
Not yet, okay. Okay. Anything else?
Essentially the situation. Happy to answer any questions.
Sure. Gentlemen of the board, do you have any questions for the applicant before we open it to the public?
I just had one question. You had said that the two lots, in NOI, affect the, what's the operation of the solar array? So obviously, when you got the Rachel's special permit, and you probably went through stormwater at that time, so none of the stormwater concerns that were raised at that time, the drainage in any way affects lots 1 and 2 as we hear.
Yeah, I don't believe so as far as, I mean, we haven't obviously done any engineering as part of this part of it. We did go through a stormwater management portion of it when we did the original special permit application, but the, I mean, the...
None of the drainage?
Right, the impervious surfaces, yeah, yeah. It was all back with where the array was.
Right, okay. Just wanted to check. Thank you.
Okay.
There's no panels or any, there's no, any sort of construction on these two lots?
Joe?
I don't know how many questions.
Nothing. Chris? Alright, I guess at this time, we can open it up to public for inputs? Anybody from the public, if you want to come forward, have any questions of the applicant, any questions for the planning board? Rest, when you come forward, state your name and address and... Any concerns, yeah? Yeah, please come to the microphone, just so it's being, because it's being recorded.
Ken Bell, 2798 Elm Street in Dayton. So my lot borders this property, and my well and my septic is rid against the property line within the limits of it.
Okay.
I'm concerned about the lot that's bordering me, where they can put a septic or a well. Because, you know, with a 100-foot buffer with a well, it almost completely eliminates that lot that's adjacent to me.
And where are you? Are you Mount 23, Lot 11? Yourself of that property, sir?
I'm sorry?
Yourself of that?
So I'm actually parallel to it, so right up against the stone wall. So if you look at the lot here, let's see here. I don't know if you can, this writing's really small, so Lot 2, there's like a little stone wall going into the lot that says John Bruce Zasmita. So my house is right with that little stone wall that kind of comes down to Zasmita. My well is like 15 feet from that line.
Okay.
So I just don't know how they can put that there. My septic is in front of my house, which is, again, right near that property line.
One of the things that is required is that the septic system and the well has to be, by law, away from septic systems and the wells, no matter what. They cannot do it any closer than what the law allows.
Okay, alright.
Those can be part of the provisions as they, as we go forward.
Correct, yes.
If this gets approved, that that's going to have to be assessed.
Okay, and how about stormwater runoff? Because that's uphill. That's all land coming down towards my property.
Same thing.
And if they're going to clear six acres?
Yeah.
It's going to have heavy runoff.
That will be, also be part of the review?
Okay.
Engineering, that, whatever engineer, whoever they hire has to obey by the rules.
There is actually a, one thing I forgot to mention, I don't know if you saw it yet, but there was a, a scope of services that came to, I think you probably got it this evening, right? Forwarded along to them, or yesterday?
I think it's...
I saw the meeting.
Yeah, so the scope of services, I think the scope of services is focused entirely on zoning?
Okay.
Zoning, but they actually asked for additional information that contained that after that, that actually, I believe they were asking about some of the stormwater stuff that was approved previously.
So we have a, a engineering service that we run all these plans through that assess things like zoning, stormwater. They also touched on the Conservation Commission portions of it for the Conservation Commission. So that's, that will be part of the normal review process for the application and what the applicant is going to, going to put forward.
Okay. And this, last question I have is, so you got two conforming lots and then one non-conforming lot for the solar array?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, you've got the plot plan there, right?
Yeah.
Yes, you got lots 1 and 2 that are abutting or up or with frontage on Elm Street, and you got the one non-conformal in the back, which is going to be used for the solar.
And there'll be no additional houses beyond that, on the non-conforming?
This is not a buildable residential lot in the note, and that would be the intent.
Okay.
Alright, there's, there's no intent to further develop Lot 3?
We're just trying to construct on Lot 1 and Lot 2.
Okay.
Okay. It's all my questions?
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public? Nothing? Oh, sure. Yeah, please, come forward.
Ron Cai from Elm Street.
Yes, sir.
I got some pictures here I'd like you to take a look at.
Sure, absolutely.
See a picture of the, it's the north side. This comes from the hot street. This comes from their land. It goes out here. That's the only way the water leaves this property. So they stop messing with the water over there. It's all wetland. It's all wetland. That's just over the wall from me, between me and their roadway.
This is, this is Elmir?
This is wetland, yeah. Yeah, well, that's, this is wetlands.
Okay.
Anything in green is wet. Is, is water. This year, it's down a little bit, but within another month or two, we're going to have a lot of water in there. I did have some, I didn't bring the pictures, but I had pictures of my culverts under my driveway, just chock full coming through.
Okay.
Water on my property, all from over here. Now, they're going to start messing with this, this line again. They could have problems, you know? I can't stop them, but there's something going to, you know, something needs to be done because everything is wet. Everything is wet.
That is a home, yeah.
Anybody can pull these up off of Google. That's exactly what I do.
Okay. Yeah, part of the, the Conservation Commission is, what's the application they submit?
Notice of intent?
Notice of intent, yeah.
There is a delineation, then a notice of intent.
Notice of intent, and we'll get, go through the...
Yeah, I'm going to stop up to see Lisa.
Yeah, exactly. I recommend you just let her know, just, you've already done some homework.
You can see what I'm looking at.
Okay.
I got probably 50 pictures, and I'm not going to bring them all in, you know?
Okay, yes, so you're familiar with Lisa, so you know who to talk to, so you could definitely express your concerns because it's going to be going through her office as well?
I got worked with the solar farms, so...
Okay. Alright.
But I'm getting, this is all water down there.
Okay.
And not just down here, it's also up in the back. Water comes in from both sides.
Okay.
And from the power lines at the top, it's downhill all the way, so it brings all the water down here. Now, they could run into problems or create problems by putting houses in there. I can't stop them, but they have to figure something out.
Okay. Alright. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Evening, gentlemen, ma'am. Jacob Andrews, 2770 Elm Street.
Can you please repeat that into the microphone?
Jacob Andrews, 2770 Elm Street.
And I'm Stephanie Soares, 2770 Elm Street.
Thank you.
So before we get started, I just want to kind of second on Ken. I know Dan, he's right beside me. We have ledge right behind us. It's a 60-foot hill, 20 feet off the back of our house. We already have a water problem. I'm sure adding houses to that is going to be another issue, just like Ron on the other side. Our septic abuts the property that they're talking about building on, the second lot over. And our well abuts the property too, within five feet of each direction.
So if you're looking on the map, it's next to Lot 2. So the proposed lot will be directly next to our house and behind our house?
Oh, so you're Map 23, Lot 11?
Yeah, so it's, I mean, it's listed as Jacob and Joshua Ferry, but it's not accurate.
Previous, yeah, previous owner.
That's right.
Okay.
So we're definitely concerned about the water issue, and also the layout of the two lots are a little concerning for me, just because they're both really awkwardly shaped, and especially Lot 2 that abuts our property. I just don't understand where they're going to be able to build a house on this lot. Directly behind our house too is all uplands, so I don't, like, it's not really making sense to me. When I had called the Town Hall just to kind of get some perspective as to why there's no, like, pictures of, like, the houses structured on this map, and they said at this point, it's not really required in the building.
It is, it is too early, yeah.
Yeah, so, but in other cases where we've been present for other meetings, when we subdivided Lot 2792, which is right next to our house, when they came up with the proposal, they did show where the house was going to be put. You know, it was, for that example, it was like retreat lots going in, so I think their neighbors felt a little bit more comfortable knowing, you know, what type of houses they wanted to put in. So at this time, I'm totally just not, it's not settling well with me with how vague the layout of everything is, with nothing really structured on the land.
It would be good just to see. A lot of times they'll throw a box in somewhere with some...
Yeah, like, like I said, and the Lot 2 right next to my land is so awkwardly shaped, like, I don't even see, like, the point of putting in like a decent-sized house with where it's going to go on the land.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I understand.
And then I'm also concerned too because of, again, how awkwardly shaped it is, just of, you know, there's a lot of forest over there and a lot of trees, so I'm concerned about them cutting down a bunch of trees right near our house, you know, just to kind of give them obviously space on their land, but where it's going to, you know, take away our privacy and...
Which taking that out would affect our septic, our well.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
The ledge that's right behind it, they do something with the ledge, you know, our water level is probably going to drop substantially.
And then I know, obviously, I don't know, like, how much we can talk more about, like, what's going on with Lot 3, because that's where currently where the solar fields are now. But, you know, down the line, are they looking to put in a big development or a neighborhood, possible streets right next to my house? Because I'm not really set like that.
Yeah, I mean, I can only tell you what the applicant said.
Right, so it's kind of unsettling just to kind of see, like, is this the initial start of them developing that?
I mean, it is, it is listed, it is shown here on this map as a not a buildable residential lot, so...
Because the solar panels are on there, correct? That's why.
They also have an easement going right through, as a roadway sign.
So this could actually stop. If you look at the plan, all that's left for the frontage is the access road to access to the back, where there'd be no more frontage left. If we didn't do this, yes, ISM Solar, when they're done with their lease, could open it up and develop it up. So it's actually the opposite.
What's stopping them from putting a road right through there, on the road that's there?
Right now, no. They own the whole thing.
So when the lease is up, though, they could still potentially do it, correct?
Correct. I assume that where we're doing this, if we take the two front lots, they don't have frontage, so they can't put a road in there because they only left themselves enough for the access road.
Okay. But what about on the other?
I want to be clear too. I, I, I'm speaking on behalf of this gentleman who's buying the property. I don't want to, I did represent ISM Solar, but that was years ago, what his intentions might be.
Down the road, or, yeah.
Right, but the legal, the legal effect of this, when you take the frontage away, if they want to do something, they'd have to go with the variance, which, you know, with what's, what's little left, then difficult.
Yeah.
Rob, if I may ask, originally, you guys have come before the board for this same thing some time ago. Am I correct?
I don't, I don't believe so. We came in before the board because there was a...
I'm sorry, sir. If anybody's going to speak, they have to speak at the podium.
We can move, that's fine.
We're also, we just, we just...
Thank you.
God peace, that's all.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much for coming up. Thanks, Larry.
So what it, what the, I'm going to try to do the history as quick as I can. Mr. Lucine had developed the solar field, and then he spun it off to another company who was actually operating the solar field. And that ownership changed at some point. As I recall, the original company actually went bankrupt. There was a very long and involved bankruptcy. It was a subdivision of SunEd, actually. So at that point, because the lessee had changed, there was, I think, a modification of the permit for that, those grounds, but we haven't proposed this, this version of it.
As I record, or remember this, I think these lots had to be subdivided off of this property. Am I correct? Am I wrong?
Look, that's what, that's essentially what we're trying to do through this process.
So that's what you're trying to do now?
Correct.
My question is, what happened before when you tried to do that before? That's, I...
We didn't try to do that before.
You're going to have to come to the podium, sir.
I'm not doing well speaking for you, Ron, so...
Okay.
Introduce yourself.
Ron Mederos. The property was originally in the name of Sun Edison, as Rob stated.
The entire property?
Then they, they did go bankrupt. The project was taken over by Borrego Solar, and the town had on their records as, that, that it was Borrego that was the applicant. And I was dealing with a company called Clearway. So we had to come back in, and there was a vote by the board to allow the change of ownership from Borrego, well, the holder of the special permit, from Borrego to Clearway.
Okay.
And I believe at that time, the board also asked to see a plan showing the distance from the property line to the property line of the Form A lots to the property line of the array, and then from the array itself. And they were like 425 feet, and the other one's close to 500 feet away from the panels.
Okay.
So that's why...
I'm, I'm just trying to put two and two together because I've been here for a few, a couple of years.
Do you remember when we did the permitting for the...
Yeah, so I just wanted to know why that was done and, you know, things like that.
That was why we were in there at that one time.
Okay, thank you.
This has had a bit of a history, the whole project.
Thank you.
I'd like to say too, just for the record, right, there's a number of solar farms in town, and they all change ownership constantly. These solar companies are constantly buying and selling to one another. You get a permitting crew that comes in, they get your permits. Soon as they get those, they sell it to another company that builds them out. Soon as they build them out, they sell it to another company who rakes in all the money. So the ownerships are constantly changing. Every single solar farm we've had in this town, the company changes at every phase of the development. So there's a lot of money to be made in solar, but we're not making any.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I can?
Yes, ma'am.
If you recall, Joe, I think one of the things that you might be recollecting too is, I think, Mr. Mederos came before us, I think it was like one or two years ago, to find out how we could do this. Because the question was, because the land was in a special permit, it was locked in that special permit. He originally wanted to apply for a Form A, but we couldn't do that because you have to do a modification to the special permit first. I think that's what you're thinking of.
Yes, yes, yes.
But it's just more of an informational and a preliminary presentation, just saying, we're thinking to do this. How do we do this? When he was before the board. And so it was determined that before he can do, apply for the Form A lots, he has to do a modification to the special permit to take the land out of it and then turn it into Form As.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alright. Thank you, Mrs. Easterday.
Right now, they have frontage.
There's 211 feet over there.
There's what?
There's 211 feet left over.
Close it to the public if we're going to talk now, or...
Well, any other public input at this time? Any concerns? Anybody on camera? I think, I think we're by ourselves here. We're watching ourselves, yeah. Alright, thank you. So, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion to close the public input here?
No.
Not there?
No, nope.
Don't close it yet.
Don't close anything.
Okay.
You can continue it, but...
No, I thought we had to close it before we could discuss.
No, no, we can, we can, we can, we can, when we're, when we're done, when we're done having a conversation, we can, we can vote to close and vote, we can, or we can vote to continue.
Okay.
I don't think we're done chatting yet.
No, I, I just think they, I don't know if we can, what we can do, because they do have the frontage, just 250 feet.
211 feet left over.
There'd be 211 feet left on the lot. I was looking at just the access roads. When I told you that we'd be blocking them in, I wasn't looking at what was left out, just looking at the access.
What's, what's the required frontage for 150, right? 250.
Actually, they have water here.
Say that again?
I was looking at just that access.
He said if they have water, it's 150.
They don't have water. Everybody here is on a well. So the, the leftover frontage is 211 feet. You do not have water locally, so the required minimum frontage is 250 feet.
Right, but their question was specifically, could they put a road in and potentially develop the back of the property? And what I looked, my eye went to, there's an access road that's delineated on the plan. I wasn't looking at the full frontage. I was wrong about what I said, and I don't ever want to mislead. That's how it is.
You've got the minimum requirement for...
ISM Solar would have 211 feet. You need 40 feet for a road. So they, they could potentially put a road in.
Correct.
I, I mean, I can't speak for their intent. I just can't. That's not, that has nothing to do with us, but I just, I looked at the plan wrong, and I apologize. I wouldn't want to mislead them.
They could do a, a pork chop lot, retreat lot. You only need, you need 40 feet for a retreat lot?
40.
Yeah, you need 40 feet for a retreat lot. So technically, you can actually develop the back.
Wouldn't the wetlands?
But the wetlands would make it very difficult.
Which lot are you talking about?
I'm talking about Lot 3.
Oh, yeah, so it's possible down the...
Yeah, because it's, the minimum, the minimum frontage for, for, if you don't have water locally, which everybody's talking about a well, so you don't have water locally, it's 250 feet.
I don't think that it will be feasible for them to do that later on. I'm not saying anything because it's way too long of a road that they would have to put in because of all the wetlands that they, they would, they would have to go through. And by the time they put the road there with all the ledge, and I don't know that it would be worth doing.
I mean, speaking to the old wetland delineation, the front of that property is not, it's not developed.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
It's not, and I can't imagine it's changed since the expiration of the old delineation, so just being familiar with that, I, I mean, maybe they could get a house or a couple in the back if they wanted to do several retreat lots, but I don't think they could do more than that, but that's just my opinion, just looking at it.
After walking that a few years ago, I, I, all I saw was wetlands back there.
And I mean, that's, that's one of the reasons why they put the solar on originally, 'cause they really, they couldn't do anything else with it, so.
Well, that kinda goes back to the point about whether the drainage deals, stormwater.
Yeah.
You know, would affect almost everything along those.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Unfortunately, that's not something that we can.
Correct, right.
Do anything.
So I've gotta say, like, I, I'm noting, uh, some concerns, I just wanna say them out loud here. One of them was, you know, uh, when you guys update, update this, would be good to show proposed location for a house. I know that's further down the road here, but, um, and just, just noting what a lot of the public here has already mentioned, concerns with the existing water, water situation in the area, ledge in the area affecting, uh, affecting their septic, existing septic, existing wells, uh, and also stormwater drainage concerns. So those are, those are the things we're flagging on as we go, go along here, uh, and just hear the concerns from the public, and looking at the topography here and realizing that a lot of this is uplands. So just know that there's gonna be a lot of sensitivity with the land around you, the existing homeowners, uh, moving forward.
And, and, I, to, to be completely honest with you guys, those issues are better addressed at the Conservation Commission when those applications get filed. The reason why we didn't locate the houses on the lot is because we don't have a delineation.
Right.
We don't have a, the bordered boundary area, so trying to put it on is just being disingenuous, 'cause you don't know where they actually are.
I, I understand, I'm just saying, as, as we go along, and we're coming back here, and I realize we're, we're too early in the process, and you've still gotta go through that.
Right.
We would like to see that, just to better communicate to everybody what, what the idea is, 'cause I, you know, as, 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 uh, was mentioned earlier, Lot Two is, is a little unusual shaped, and so looking at it quickly, we're not sure where you'd actually fit a house there to fit within all the constraints.
So the, the, I, the reason why is, as they've all pointed out, the topography of the lot.
Right.
When the engineer looked at it, that, he tried to keep with, you know, kinda the, the gradations of the land, so.
Got it, okay.
That's why it wasn't, you know, as, as normal as you'd ordinarily see.
Yeah, that's why it's not a nice rectangle.
Yeah, the, I can tell you, the perp tests where it was located were more than a hundred feet off the boundary for where they are located.
Okay.
So more than likely, you know, obviously, where, where the perks are, the septic would be that far into the property.
Okay.
That's not true. This perp test was in a hundred, under a hundred feet of my well.
Yours?
Mm-hmm.
Mine, mine as well.
Okay. I, that's, I was told, I was told that, by the, that the perks were more than a hundred feet in.
They're like twenty-five feet within my well.
Your lot? Okay.
Okay.
Then, then, they, that, that won't pass, because it has to be.
They're not gonna be allowed to put them there.
It has to be over a hundred feet, a hundred plus feet.
Hundred and fifty wells.
Is, is it a hundred and fifty now, like?
Septic from the wells, yes, they have to be separated.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so there, there's no getting around these requirements, so.
Okay. So, so moving forward, will we be notified when it gets put to the next process and what they're looking at?
Yes, so the conservation. Yeah, conservation's the same sort of process, you get, they, they have to notify all the voters, you guys would all come in, same thing, it's just a different board. But that's where, and that's where all of those issues really would have to be kind of engineered out at that point. For this purpose, it's just, well, a Form A just requires you have so much frontage and so much acreage, and then they have to look at the impact for what it would be for the permitted area, for the solar array. So that's what this process is, so that, that's kinda separate.
Yeah, this is the starting public hearing, this is start of the process.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, anything else before we vote to continue?
I'd just like to say one thing, Jeff.
Sure.
I don't see the solar company trying to build out houses. I don't think they're gonna cut in a road to build houses, I think there's probably another. At least fourteen years left on their contract, you know, if it's a twenty-year array. They've been there at least five or six years now, right? Up and running? So they've probably got like fourteen years left. At the end of the fourteen years, they're either gonna revamp their panels or dismantle them, and at that point, you know, the land will be up for sale. They, you know, they're not in business to build much.
That's gonna be sold, another.
But like, you know, there is an awful lot of ledge and rock there, and there's a lot of wetlands, I've been back there many times. Um, and so I know what's back there. I don't see it being developed, but eventually our town is getting developed slowly.
I, you gave me details on the lease, I did it.
Okay.
It was twenty-year lease with two five-year extensions, so it's essentially a thirty-year.
So it was like six years ago?
It was twenty seventeen, so it's seven years ago.
Yeah, seven years.
So it's twenty-three years left on that lease.
Right. And they got a little five, ten years extension?
Right, I, I mean, this, this, uh, this project was done early enough in the SREC program where you, it's more than likely, I think they'd probably wanna continue the cash flow, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah.
Thank you. So what are the, uh, before we take it to vote, to continue, are we, are we looking to put this on the sixth or later?
It's up to you. Six, all we have is what we continue tonight so far, so.
Yeah, so the problem with the six is it might get further continued because it depends on whether, um, we've got anything really to talk about, because it's gotta go through, it's gotta go through engineering review, and then ConCom's gonna wanna chop on it as well. So we can, we can tentatively put it on the sixth? That sounds agreeable? See what happens, 'cause I don't know, I don't know when you're gonna be able to get in front of ConCom on this.
Well, if we had, at, at this point, we're just trying to figure out if, if the special permit would be released.
Okay.
So if this board is saying that they'd want us to go to ConCom, that's fine. We, we don't have any immediate intents of building or anything else, so.
Right.
There was no point, like, my, my conversations, it was why run to ConCom now when the delineation may expire when we do choose to try to construct it, so. It, it's so early in the project, we hadn't actually intended to go do the redelineations and all of that.
Okay, all right. So, and there's a, uh, there's an engineering review that.
Yes.
We wanna go through that process as well, and then we can reconvene once that's completed to further discuss.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, the engineering of it, I absolutely should, you know, that, that, that I, I understand, but again, that, I, I don't, I don't see any, I'm, I'm trying to think about it from the standpoint of it impacting the Form A of the solar array, I don't really see whether ConCom would, would have anything to do as to whether or not you want to or don't want to release it from the special permit process.
Got it.
I'd also, trying to guard my client's interest here, if this board's not inclined to release it, having him go do the engineering and all the expense that that would be, it, it makes the project almost unfeasible, so. I, I'd rather, it, as part of the process, you say yes or no here, and then yes, we still have to go through the Conservation Commission, but then at least I know we have a viable deal as to, you know, between the two parties, whether or not the, the parcels can even be conveyed.
All, all I can say at this point is I have no concerns with it becoming Form As, but we can't vote on it because we don't have any, uh, any substantiating information back from the engineering.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, yeah, absolutely, I, I fully expected that we were gonna have to have another meeting, but I just wanted to make sure I met the board's expectations with what we should be doing.
I have no concerns, sir.
I have no concerns.
We're not, I'm not.
We can't make a decision on anything, yeah.
We don't, like, we don't have the information in front of us to make a decision, uh, but as far as like being, what, what you were presented with this evening, with the proposal for carving these out, making two Form As.
At this point, it meets, so I don't have any issues.
Yeah, me neither.
At this point.
The frontage, the frontage is there, so I don't know that we can do much of anything.
Okay, all right.
And how, where, even if you could technically build something on here, it's all depend upon the, the design. Obviously, the applicant thinks it's feasible, which is why he's willing to invest in it.
Right.
But that's all a later decision, it could be that by the time the plan's drawn up and they're going to ConCom and they look at the stormwater, it's like, yeah, no, this doesn't really work. That's not our decision here, as far as this request.
Right, so if, if, if it's a complete bust from that perspective, there's no reason.
Right.
To vote in the positive for the Form As, 'cause it'd be, it wouldn't be useful, it wouldn't be a useful vote. So it's.
Well, I'm saying that there's no, I see no objection to the Form A.
Right.
Even if down the road, ConCom or stormwater, or whatever other analysis is done, shows that the house is not feasible, or anything is not feasible.
Okay.
That's not part of our decision tonight, but.
It's not.
Not tonight, but part of our decision is simply the ability with required frontage to break them off as separate parcels.
Okay.
Whatever happens after that is a different story.
Okay. So, um, I'm more comfortable continuing this after we hear back from engineering, um, and I don't see any reason why we won't approve it for the Form As being carved out of there, but I would like to have more information on hand before we do that. I think that'd be.
Yeah, no, I, I, I mean, we can provide you with whatever it is, as I say, I mean, at this.
There was some additional requests from, uh, uh, from the engineering services, they needed some additional information from.
Well, I, I have the engagement letter, so I'll go ahead and reach out to them directly and make sure that they have what they need.
Yeah, just run it through, uh, Mrs. Easterday, just so she's in the loop, so we can keep track of Com's going back and forth.
Perfect.
Yeah, if you would, thank you.
Just have one more question too. The young lady mentioned something about the odd-shaped lot.
Yeah.
Why is it odd-shaped?
It's, so it's for the, the topography of the lot as the, the level changes.
Okay.
So just to try to accommodate that, so you can, you know, truly build something with driveways and so forth and so on, that would make sense. We tried to follow the topography of the land.
Okay. Good answer.
No matter what, you have to put out a one hundred by one hundred foot.
Foot, yeah, there's, there's, there's still the building envelope area that, and again, that would all have to come off of the delineation, and then, you know, as you probably know, the twenty-five no-touch, hundred-foot buffer, that gets you to the NOI. That's all, that's a process that all, all sits in front of us. And it's also one of, again, one of the reasons why we haven't tried to locate the house, because we couldn't, based upon the information that we have. And again, we're not looking to stick shovel in the ground anytime soon, so to do in the delineation that may expire is just incurring expenses that is just needless.
That's fair, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, gentlemen, I'd like to entertain a motion to, uh, continue the public hearing. DG, DG Dyson LLC and ISM Solar Three LLC, twenty-seven thirty-four Elm Street, to the November sixth planning board meeting.
Make that motion.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's five ares. All right, so we continue that to November sixth.
So we'll be back here on November sixth. Same time, same place.
Thank you, folks.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Very much appreciated.
We'll see you again.
And if I see y'all, have a swing in and say hi.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
I don't mind shit about Dyson, stop by that guy's house. How we talking to you? And you have a handle? He's always helping me with shit.
Got us, okay. All right, so next item of the agenda is approval of minutes for October second, twenty twenty-four. Somebody make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Joe.
What, what do you, what do you?
I thought I heard Joe.
He's seconding, he's seconding, what do you, made the motion? Uh, Mrs. Easterday, is there any correspondence? Nothing? Any additional public input? And a no from Cable. All right?
All done.
With that, uh, somebody make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Woo, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good night, Cable.